Good morning. I'd like to call the special town board meeting of the Southampton Town Board to order on this 24th day of September 2020. Please rise if you're able and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
And let's do a brief moment of silence. Has become our tradition as we keep in our thoughts and prayers, all of the men and women of our armed services who defend our freedoms at home and around the world each day, but also at this time that the United States has crossed over 200,000 dead from coronavirus. Let's pause in their memory and also the recent passing of Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg, Supreme Court Justice. Let's do a brief moment of silence. Please be seated. Madam Clerk, would you read the special meeting notice followed by a roll call?
Certainly. Members of the Town Board, special town board meeting, Thursday. Special Town Board Meeting, Thursday, September 24th, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. Please be advised that pursuant to Section 62 of Town Law, a special town board meeting will be held in the Town Board Meeting Room, Southampton Town Hall, 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, on Thursday, September 24th, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. for the purpose of considering the following. Presentation of the Supervisor's 2021 Tentative Budget by the Town Clerk to the Town Board pursuant to Town Law 106, Section 3. Jay Schneiderman, Supervisor, Town of Southampton, dated September 22nd, 2020. Supervisor Schneiderman.
Present.
Councilwoman Lobstad. Councilwoman Martel.
Present.
Councilwoman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilwoman Skivon.
Present.
All right. Thank you, Cindy. So we have four of us here. Councilwoman Lobstad could not be present today. Today is a special day as I present the budget for the town of Southampton. You know, for the most part, in many respects, the role of supervisor is very similar to the role of Town Board. You know, we sit in similar chairs. We all have the same vote on policy, but there are some distinctions. One, you know, since we've been in a seventh month state of emergency now, there are certain powers reserved for the supervisor to make sure that the supervisor can act quickly to address public safety issues. And also, you know, the supervisor is the individual that prepares the budget for the town, the recommended budget. And once that document is presented, then it becomes the Town Board's document and you can change it as you see fit. Then we adopt the budget and that becomes how we operate the town. Of course, the budget, it's never a perfect document. It requires a lot of assumptions. You're assuming what your expenses are going to be. And particularly in a time like this, like a time of COVID, where we don't know when this pandemic is going to end, there is more uncertainty than typical. We don't know about state revenues, federal revenues, county revenues that assist us. We don't know what our expenses are going to be. And so a lot of this is guesswork, but we have a great team in the Controller's Office that's been working on this for a while, trying to get the latest data and make data-driven decisions and prepare a budget that we believe will meet the town's needs and has the budgetary flexibility even for the unexpected things. So I'm going to move over to the podium. I'm going to take you through a quick PowerPoint. First, the clerk is going to hand you the budget. I've already presented earlier today the budget to the Town Clerk, which is the traditional procedure. And Clerk Schermeier.
The table is so wide now. I'm going to come behind you and hand you the supervisor.
I have to say that, you know, we took a photograph. We typically take a photograph of the supervisor handing the budget to the clerk.
On your side this time.
Of course, this year, we're both wearing masks, which is a little bit different.
That's yours, right?
Thank you.
Councilwoman Martel.
Thank you. Got it?
Yep. We'll set someone to talk in a second.
I want to, while we pass this out, recognize some of the department heads who are here today. We have Kristen Dulos, Parks Director, and Sandra Cercioni, or Human Resources Director. Connie Conway is here from Communications. Janice Wilson is here from my office. Frank Sapon, Deputy Supervisors here in Control. Len Marchese, Caraback from the Town Attorney's Office. And preparing a budget like this does require a tremendous amount of work and meetings. And the Controller met with all of the department heads in trying to figure out what the needs of those departments are and tried to reconcile that with the reality of our finances and what we're able to do. All right. I'm going to switch places here. Let me take my mask. So to the first slide here. So again, in preparing a budget, and you all have a copy of the budget message, which is more detailed than this quick presentation I'm about to provide, but this does parallel it somewhat. So in preparing a budget, you rely on analyzing financial trends, forecasting revenues, and of course, we try to be conservative in those things, not to over assume, to assume more revenue will come in than actually will. So we look at what the past has been and try to make a decent projection as to what the future revenue will be. And we have seen this year, things sort of all over the map because of the pause. We lost building permit revenues. We lost other revenues in different areas, justice court fees and things like that because the courts were closed for quite some time. So budget challenges, I mentioned this before, but the impacts of COVID-19 has created extraordinarily, an extraordinarily challenging setting to prepare a budget because we just really do not know how long it's going to go. We have lost revenues, as I mentioned, justice court, for example. We fear that we're, the county may be cutting back. The state has already told us they're reducing our aid to municipalities by 20%. Our CHIPS money, which we use for highway, by 20%. And at the same time that we're losing revenues, we're seeing increased costs. Our population has gone up, which means that, you know, the police overtime goes up, the dispatch overtime goes up. We have to deliver services to more people than we normally would expect. We've had summertime population basically since March or April. And even now, as we close out September, we have a population that's probably twice what we normally would anticipate during the week. So more people means more expenses. It's just the reality of it. So it's very challenging in terms of budgeting. We also got hit, and this is somewhat unusual too, 11% increase in pension contributions. The last couple of years, they've been pretty steady. When we were preparing this budget, we had anticipated a 2% increase in pension contributions. As you know, we have retirees and we live in a state where you're required to have 100% funding of your pension liabilities. And so the employer has to pay that based on the number of employers, et cetera, that the town maintains. And, you know, Tom DiNapoli does a really good job in terms of managing the money and they have, you know, they have a portfolio account. The market has been doing great, except under the law, they have to evaluate it at the end of March. The end of March of the current year is where they evaluate the value of the portfolio and figure out that differential. Now, the problem is the end of March this year was right when the market took a historic dive. It dropped significantly. It was right when this pandemic was becoming realized and the market just took a nosedive. And unfortunately, because of that, that's the snapshot they take of the value of the portfolio. It couldn't have been times worse. So now we have 11%. That 11% is something like $500,000 or $600,000 impact to the town, something like that, Len, right? In that $650,000. Then we had to make last minute adjustments to this budget because we got word of this increase. So maintaining sound financial positions of the town and protecting taxpayers, those obviously are the goals. You know, the town enjoys a triple A credit rating. We want to try to maintain that as best that we can. And, you know, we don't, if you know me, I don't like raising property taxes. I feel like people struggle. You know, costs of living go up every day. And though we're known for affluence out here in the Hamptons, there are a lot of hardworking, regular folks that don't enjoy that kind of income, who, when their expenses go up, have to make very difficult choices about food and rent and heat. And you're causing, you know, trying to keep the property taxes down, I think, is really important. All right. So in terms of budget accomplishments, this budget that I am delivering today is structurally balanced. The expenses, obviously, and the revenues are real and they match. The tax increase is under the New York State cap. A lot of areas, I believe, will be piercing the cap this year. Because of COVID, the governor has not yet provided any waivers to the cap, but this budget is within the cap. It's close, but it's within the cap. The tax rate in the general fund, that's the one that everybody in the town pays, that is unchanged. It's flat. It's no change at all in the general fund tax rate. But the other major funds, police, all the part-town funds and things like that, when you combine them, it's a 2.49% tax rate increase. Now, that's, I wish it wasn't. I wish it wasn't. I've been doing this for 21 years. I've presented a number of budgets. I was with the county, worked on the county's budget. For 20 years now, I have been able to deliver budgets where I have not increased the tax rate for the people I represent. This year, there is a tax rate increase proposed. It's small, 2.49%. It amounts to about $12 a year, $12 a year for a home valued at half a million. So if your home's assessed at a million, it's about $24, $2 a month. It's not a large increase, but I wish it wasn't there. There are ways around it. I could, you know, I could have proposed, it costs more to use the beaches or something like that. We could have done it through fees, but we thought about a lot of different things. And this is a bare bones budget. You know, we're not adding employees. We're not going, you know, we're not, there's no jumps in expenditures that are unwarranted. This is basically the cost of running the town in an era of COVID. We need $12 a year more from people who have homes that are half a million dollars. So it's not a lot, a dollar a month, but it is an increase. And we've made obviously adjustments here to the revenue offsets. As I mentioned, you know, that pension alone is $650,000, $660,000. So, and, you know, the justice court fees, they fell by, I think, what, Len, about a million dollars?
Almost half, yeah.
Yeah, almost half. So we're trying to make up for revenue loss. And a town has to get the money from somewhere. And if we, if you have a shrinking contribution from non-property tax revenues, there's really not much else you can do. Where do you go? All right. So some of the accomplishments, this budget funds all the staffing costs. We continue to have some pay-as-you-go money in this budget that allows for capital type of projects without having to pay interest costs on them by borrowing. Now, this increase, there's increases in public safety, fire protection and townwide security contained in this budget. We have increases in parks and recreation. And I know you all are aware that not only have we added parks through our CPF acquisitions, but the usage of parks has gone through the roof. People are looking for outdoor ways, you know, to get exercise, to recreate. People don't want to be indoors during COVID, so they're going to our beaches in record numbers. They're discovering our great trails. And of course, all these properties require maintenance. Highway is maintained to current levels. We are making improvements to the Hampton Bays Community Center. As you know, we're opening up Code Enforcement, the Center of Public Safety will be there in Hampton Bays now. And there are some adjustments in fees, most notably in solid waste, recycling. So we'll talk about that at another point. All right. So going forward, the capital budget sustains critical infrastructure projects. We're going, there's money in the budget or proposed money to build an evidence storage building at police headquarters, which is needed. The Shinnecock Commercial Fishing Dock, which we now own, it's a valuable facility, but we are on the hook for maintaining it now. We're doing upgrades to that facility, necessary structural upgrades. And Len, that's about a million dollars a year for two years, right?
No, it's, yeah.
Roughly. And then the Shinnecock Maritime Park, Phase 1. And part of that is privately funded, I think about $300,000. That was the development that's going on along the canal is providing a significant portion of that money. That's that little park, lots of people go fishing out there, adjacent to where the Parks Director's Office is, Maritime Park in Hampton Bays. It's a wonderful, wonderful spot, waterfront park, but it does need some improvements to parking. We're going to be building a pavilion there and some amenities. Let's see. Improvements to Parks Facility in the western side of town. It's mostly, I think, to ball fields. Improvements to the Bridge Hampton Community Center. And we're securing two trusty road endings and a number of historic restorations, including, I know, John, you've been working on the Tupper Boathouse, Canoe Place Chapel, which is in Hampton Bays, to finish that project. So in summary, since March, town operations have continued. There's a number of new programs that we developed, including the Town Litter Crew, TLC, ASAP. We, you know, we did our best. We had to put plexiglass everywhere. We had to change the way we operate, stay-at-home policies, remote work policies and all. You know, we managed to keep the public safe and keep the town functioning. The town remains focused on its core mission of providing for public safety, maintaining our quality of life, protecting our natural resources and protecting the financial well-being of the town and all of its taxpayers. So lastly, I just wanted to thank all of our employees who've been working through extremely challenging circumstances and to all of our community members who have been helping our town achieve one of the lowest incident rates of COVID infection in New York State. I also obviously want to thank Controller Marchese for preparing the budget and all of his staff, particularly Dorothy. But a lot of work went into getting this document together. So thank you to all of the Controller staff and of course, to Frank, who put this presentation together and worked on the budget message, Frank Sapon, my deputy, and to all the department heads who worked with the Controller, submitting their own budgets and who have been working to make sure that our community services are all met through a very challenging time. And with that, I'll turn it over to the board. If you guys have any questions about the budget, I know you're seeing it for the first time. It's going to take some time to digest it, but Len is here to also answer any questions you may have.
I have a question about the revenue offsets.
Sure.
Does this cover the county funding, the changes in Suffolk County funding that we receive for our police force?
All right. And, you know, I had a conversation this morning with Peter Scully, one of the county executive's deputies.
That's been a recent development, I know.
It's a very recent development and it came after we had prepared and printed this budget. And the county budget is not adopted yet. And it may not actually be there when it is adopted. So I know, you know, we have a very capable legislator in Bridget Fleming, who's going to attempt to restore the money. But I also had a conversation with Peter Scully, as I mentioned, because I believe, you know, the county received 257 million in CARES Act funding. And one of the things that CARES Act funding can cover is police, as I understand it, based on a conversation I had with County Controller Kennedy. Right, what you're referring to is the recent sort of revelation by the county executive that cuts would be made to the revenue sharing. So we get a portion of sales tax from the county, approximately $3 million, that we use to help fund our police department. It's actually money I fought really hard for when I was a legislator and it's significant funding. It used to be less than a third of that money and we got it up to about $3 million. So the county executive is talking about cutting that in half, which would be a million and a half dollar cut. But he also believes strongly that there will be a federal package that provides aids to municipalities. And he is promising that even if the budget does contain this cut, that soon as that federal program gets enacted, that he will make the town whole, that they will restore all the money. And so, you know, from a budgeting perspective, what do you do with that? Well, first I said, I believe that this could be funded through the CARES Act of the money that they received and looking for ways to spend the 257 million that are eligible. And I believe this is one of the ways. So I think that they could submit this for CARES Act funding under the original package. So I'm hoping that they'll analyze that and change it. Now, worst case scenario is there is no federal, this budget does go through at the county level with this cut. And there's no federal package, in which case, that's why you have rainy day funds. We have adequate reserves in the police fund. I hate to use them, but they are enough to cover this million and a half dollar loss. It, you know, it may take us below the level I'd like to see and what the credit rating agencies like to see, but if we have to, we're prepared. But I'm hoping we don't have to. So you can, as you guys look through this budget, if you feel that there's a likelihood, and again, budgeting is, there's a lot of assumptions. If you feel that there's a likelihood that we might not get that money, then we're going to have to figure out how to either reduce costs within the police department or come up with a revenue offset. So that's a challenge we now face. We'll have more information as you review this, as the county reviews County Executive Belone's budget. And so, you know, we'll be able, you know, you guys will be able to, you know, to make tactical decisions based on that information.
Thank you. I hope the federal government does come up with a municipal aid package that would help.
Yeah. I mean, the county.
Municipalities throughout the state and a lot of them are in much, much worse.
And the county's looking over two years at, I think it's over half a billion dollars in shortfalls. So if we don't, if we don't get a federal package, we're going to have a lot of problems, particularly at the state and county level. We would like, we would love to get reimbursed. And we're putting in for fee reimbursement for some of our COVID expenses. We'd love to get reimbursed for some of our revenue shortfalls that are directly related to COVID, some of our expenses. There has been no aid to municipalities, nothing from the federal government. I mean, they handed out trillions of dollars, you know, in the PPP and other programs in the CARES Act, zero. The town has got nothing. So we're forced to deal with rising expenses related to COVID, falling revenues and no assistance. And hopefully that will change.
And a lot of that affects our public schools as well.
Absolutely.
Those are municipalities and that's probably going to be hit harder.
Yeah. It's a really challenging time. You know, thankfully, we're going into this crisis in a really strong fiscal position. You know, and, you know, we're fortunate that fiscal position has been recognized by S&amp;P and Moody's with really, you know, the highest marks that they could give us. But, and, you know, I give a lot of credit to Len and his fiscal abilities and management. But, you know, we're fortunate that we're in a strong position. A lot of towns are funded in part by sales tax. We're not one of them. Sales tax has collapsed. So that's a, the county is funded by sales tax. We're not. So we're in pretty good shape. People are paying their property taxes. But we do have challenges for certain. Other questions?
I've got quite a few questions, but I think to save time, they're detailed questions and I'll come see you or Len at some point. I did have a general question and maybe for the public's edification, if one of you two could explain the 11% increase in the New York State pension contribution and why now? And what is the root cause of that? And what is our total contribution?
Len, do you want to add to what I've said on that?
As Jay said.
You're going to have to come here.
Yeah, I'm just thinking for the public to understand that.
Yeah. As Jay indicated, the pension valuation was done on March 31st. So the way they calculate the rates that employers, public employers have to pay, is they take the value of that pension on that date, they project out all these future benefits and then they say, well, in order to meet all of these future benefits, based on what we have in the bank, you're going to need to give us this much money. Now, if that opening balance is lower because the market is down, then you have to give them more money. You know, fortunately, that value on March 1st is much higher today. So if you were to value the plan today, our rate probably wouldn't go up that much. It would go up maybe 2% or 3%.
Yeah. The point I'm trying to make.
So there's a good likelihood if we pay that now and there's no adjustments, that next year's rate goes down.
Goes down.
Right. But that, you know, that fluctuation in budgeting is really hard to deal with, you know? And that's been the problem. This is not going to be our only problem. You're going to hear about this for all municipalities throughout the state.
And that, and thank you, because that's where I was, what I was getting at and why, and something that's imposed on us that's out of our control.
Correct.
As a major increase contribution. Thank you.
You know, it's, behind all this is a real complex actuarial calculation. They're looking at each employee, you know, what tier they're in, how long they're likely to live, what their salaries are, so what their pension is likely to be. And they have to calculate, you put all that together into some algorithm and it says, okay, you need X amount of dollars and you need it in the bank. The state has to have it now anticipating that. So it's unusual. Most areas do not have 100% funded pension liability. We have to have advanced funding, so they make us fill in that gap through contributions. It's a, it's sort of a strange system. It's probably a good thing, but there's been years, other years where this has impacted the town, where it's jumped like this. We just didn't think it was coming this year because the market rebounded, but.
In prior years, the town was forced to borrow money. They actually borrowed money from COVID costs, which is not ideal.
A lot of areas do. I mean, this county's been borrowing, amortizing its pension and then it piles debt upon debt. It's.
Yeah. And that's obviously one of the county budget issues that is going to, that we're going to see as an impact into this fund, into the pension fund as well. And I just see all the municipalities in this area just being really dramatically affected. I'm just trying to, you know, point that out. I'm just trying to, you know, point that out, that it's not, it's something that's imposed on us by the situation, not something that's done internally here, but that also we're faced with this sort of cyclical problem. It just seems to have caught up with us at this time.
Let me speak briefly to the fee I mentioned in solid waste. This is a, we're having an issue. We, you know, we run a transfer station, four of them. Not all the town residents use it, but maybe 10%, 15% of our residents, they bring their waste to us, and they buy what's called the green bags. They pay for those green bags, and that's where they put their non-recyclables. And then there are containers in various categories for non-recyclables. And for years, we sort of, it was sort of self-sustaining. The money for the green bags pretty much covered the cost of getting rid of that waste, and the recycling really didn't cost us anything. Some things we've actually made money on, metals, cardboard, paper. Some things maybe cost us a little or were break even, like glass and plastic. That's completely changed. That is completely changed, and now it's costing us significant amounts to get rid of the recycling, significant. And we can no longer just do it for free. And so, you know, Len and I, we discussed this. We came up with a system that we thought was fair, continued to incentivize recycling. So rather than having a separate bag for your recyclables, you, you know, it's just one fee to use our facility. Is it $40 or $50?
50.
50. So we're putting in a $50 fee. You'll get a permit. You'll be able to go to our facility. You'll still use the green bags, and you'll be able to bring us unlimited amounts of recycling. You won't have to put them in special bags or anything. You'll still have to sort it out. But, you know, that is an effort to close some of that hole. It doesn't close all of the hole. It will close some of that hole. If the recycling markets return, you know, maybe it's something we'll be able to get rid of in the future, but for now, we really felt that, you know, it was, it was too much to ask the rest of the town taxpayers to subsidize. The number was just getting too high, and we felt that the user needed to pay a little bit for the high cost of getting rid of those recyclable, recycled materials. Something you guys can decide. You can eliminate it if you wish, but.
Well, I think we'd actually recommended that through, through the Solid Waste Advisory Committee and through Municipal Works, so that, you know, that works out to about $4 a month. It's, I, it's cost neutral. There's no money being made on this. This, this is just a flat cost.
We're still losing money on it. This is not going to close the hole, but it, it's, we'll lose a little bit less.
Yep.
Lose a little bit less. East Hampton, they have a fee to use their facility. And I think we, did we leave one facility where you could come into and pay a day pass? I don't remember. It's probably, we can look at that.
That was, it's been discussed, but I don't know where we're at.
Yeah. It's something we can talk with Christine Fenton about.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of options. This one makes sense.
You need an attendant if you're going to.
Try to get to that cost neutral, even though our costs are still, you know, we're trying to get to that point where we don't overburden people. But we also have an increase in population out here. It's dramatic. It's being shown dramatically in our waste management systems, and I think that's, you know, this is the very least we can do at this point, you know, to try to, try to be fair.
Well, the thing is, like, with the green bags, you know, a lot of people use carters, and they're paying to get rid of their garbage through their carters. If they buy a green bag, they are paying to get rid of their garbage, basically. They're, they're paying us through the cost of the green bag. But, you know, no one is offering free recycling at home where somebody picks it up. You pay to get rid of your garbage. We have been giving, basically, free recycling to people, and some people, all they're doing is bringing us recyclables. They're not bringing us their garbage, just their recyclables. And there's a cost to it, a significant cost, so.
And in the context of a world market where recycling is no longer revenue generating as a business model, you know, it's a big problem. So we used to make money, you know. We don't. We actually have to pay for recycling.
Yeah. Well, we, it was for many years, and our transfer stations are in something called an enterprise zone. For many years, it was self-sustaining. It didn't require taxpayer subsidy. In recent years, it's been up to about $1 million in additional money that we've had to bring into that enterprise zone to make it, make it whole. We're still going to be bringing money in. It's just going to be a little bit less, a little bit less, because it is.
And our contracts with, you know, other recycling facilities and where we take our garbage, that those, those costs are being passed on to us, that those increases there. It's not just a phenomenon, it's limited to Southampton. It's a phenomenon across the U.S. and essentially across the industrialized nations. So it's a huge problem. We're hoping that we'll find some resolution. I know there, there's some big projects in, in the works west of us that would hopefully offset at least some of our organic.
And Christine's been really diligent in terms of trying to get us the best deals possible, to negotiate with different municipalities and vendors, to, to try to keep the costs down. We're doing the best that we can, but.
She's doing it, she's doing a great job in that respect, in all respects. It's just, it's an overwhelming thing, compounded by having, you know, over 400,000 people come to the East End and start taxing our transport.
I mean, it's not, we don't have to even be in the solid waste and recycling business. It's something we choose to do. We choose to do it. There's lots of carters who'd be probably thrilled if we got out of the business. But we do it because we believe it's a, it's a good service for people, and particularly the recycling. We want to promote recycling. And a lot of the, a lot of the carters, we don't really know what they're doing on the recycling end. We don't know. So at least we know, when you bring it to our facility, we are actually recycling the material. So, you know, we want to, I'm hoping we keep that as a function of the town, but at some point, it becomes cost prohibitive. So we're just trying to make it a, a little bit less expensive.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Rick, do you have any questions?
I just wanted to repeat what you said, that, you know, for 2020, with all the challenges we've had, we have not gotten any additional aid from the state or the county. And I'm pretty proud of our department heads that they were able to squeeze just a little more out of that lemon. I mean, there was so much more to do with the increased participation in the beaches and the overtime for the police officers and everything we had, all the challenges we had to, you know, take care of this year, that we were able to do it, and, you know, we haven't gotten into debt for it, and, you know, I'm pretty proud of the whole town for pulling that off.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, it's really, our population has been so high, and if, you know, our budget is really based on a population of, say, 60,000, that has, swells in the summer, particularly on the weekends, which we supplement with, with seasonal employees and part-time employees. This year, we functioned with the budget we had, and a population that was easily three times our normal population. So on a per capita basis, it's, you know, per, per taxpayer, for the budget, based on the number of people here, it's probably one of the lowest-cost towns anywhere. But it's not going to stay that, that, the population hopefully won't stay as high as it is. And if it does, we're going to have to make some really difficult decisions, because we will not have adequate staff. We can't rely just on part-timers and seasonals if it's, if we're going to have this population year-round. And some people are saying that we will, that even after the pandemic, because of changes like, you know, the Zoom and things like that, that, you know, people can work from home, that a lot of people are going to want to live in an area like ours and work from their homes, and you may see a significant increase in population. And I don't know if it'll be counted, Tommy John, in the census, hopefully, probably not, but that may be a new reality, in which case, we're going to, we're going to have to make some serious changes to figure out how we get the revenue we need to maintain the level of service that our residents have been accustomed to.
Well, I would say that our, a lot of the internet providers are, particularly the provider in our town, is anticipating that, obviously, because they've done these, you know, they're, they've undertaken these big projects to increase bandwidth and increase service availability and.
Cell towers and the news.
You know, it's just, it's a lot of money that they've invested. So I think a lot of people, a lot of businesses see this as, not so much as a temporary situation, but as a longer-term situation. And I think we need to anticipate that, particularly in our budget, going.
Right. And everybody, the schools will have to go through this if they continue to see growth in school populations. There'll be capital projects to expand buildings. There'll be more teachers that are needed. Those things are expensive. And, you know, everybody's going to have to wrestle with this if we see a sudden and prolonged surge in population. You know, after 9/11, we did see a surge, but it went right back down. Who knows here?
Yeah. You know, it's just, the local schools saw a surge, and after 9/11, a lot of people moved their children out here and went to our schools, and they went through the school system.
Did they stay? Some did.
Yes, they did.
And we have that now, obviously, so.
I'm, I'm happy that this, this budget keeps our services at least where they were last year, that it keeps them steady and increasing in some places, and also keeps all of our employees on the job here in the town of Southampton. And we're going to have to look at increasing our services for, you know, the population spike that you're talking about.
Yeah, it's sort of a bare-bones budget. I just, you know, we've really stuck to our core mission and said, how do we continue to meet all these needs that people have, you know, grown to depend upon? And that's what this is. So it's, it's a, it's a cost to continue.
With revenue shortfall, with challenges.
Right. Len or Frank, did you guys want to add anything to what I've said?
No, they said it all.
All right. All right. Well, thank you. I look forward to a healthy discussion about the budget. We'll make sure that Councilman Lofstad gets her copy, and there'll be, there'll be a public hearings on the budget.
You had something about the ambulance districts. Didn't you want to talk about that at all?
Southampton ambulance or all of them?
Well, the four of them actually all have got increases, because they wanted, they need, they saw all this increase pandemic costs.
Yeah, so, well, but not great increase. We did 2%. Len is mentioning the ambulance districts. There are, I guess, four that we do the budgets for, and I think they all got 2%.
A little bit more.
A little bit over 2%. The ambulance is obviously, with more population, there are more ambulance calls. And, you know, they were, they all asked for some additional funding to help, and this budget does provide that. Maybe not every case all that they hoped for, but it is a, a little bit more than 2%. And Southampton Village may be a little more as well, because of some of the increased costs that they demonstrated.
That's, you're including that in your major, quote-unquote, major funds, the 2.49% increase? Is that?
Well, when you do the tax cap, it's all of our taxing jurisdictions combined. Everything that you folks have control over has to be grouped into one pool of mine. The ambulance districts is part of that, and they actually are higher. But, you know, again, they have a lot, they saw a lot of change.
Let me explain one thing, too, that the public may find confusing. So overall, the tax levy, the, the tax rate, the rate is what we apply against your property value as, as we assess your property. Might be worth more than we say, but what, what the sole tax assessor has determined is the value of your property, we apply that tax rate. That determines how much we collect to run the town from your particular property. That rate is going up by 2.49%, almost 2.5%. The public might say, well, isn't the governor's tax cap 2%? How, how could you increase by 2.5% and stay within the cap? And that's a great question. It's not an easy-to-answer question. The actual tax cap isn't 2%. It's slightly less than 2%, which makes it even harder to explain. But there's, it's a complicated equation to determine what the tax cap actually is, because you're allowed for growth in population, you're allowed to apply credits from years where you lowered the tax rate. And we're in that position where we can go up to right around 2.5% and still stay within that tax cap. So we calculated it out, and we're good. We can do this 2.49%. You can't, can't do much more. If you add even another 10,000 in spending, you're probably going to be in the position of having to pierce the cap. We're very close to the, the number. But I want, and Len, if you, if you want to add anything more to that, how the cap is calculated, it's a.
You're, you're right. That was primarily got to do with the carryover, because last year's, we didn't go up to the cap. We were actually under the cap by a good amount of money. So you're all.
Yeah, so, so what Len is saying, because they're trying to record it on CTV, is we're applying the credit from last year because we didn't increase the tax rate at all. In fact, we lowered it last year. Now, let me, on that note, I want to remind everybody, we put a freeze in place. We were concerned about how our assessing system could be affecting average people in the town, and we wanted to take a look at it, and we agreed to a two-year freeze. So if you don't touch your property, you don't build a garage or a pool, in addition, whatever, we're not changing your value of your house. If, if we have you down as a million-dollar house, you're still a million-dollar house. Now, it's interesting, because this year, we saw the largest growth in property value that we have ever seen, ever. So had we continued to reassess based on market trends, there would have been a large jump in valuation, and there is absolutely no doubt in my mind that you'd actually be seeing a tax rate decrease, because that, that one number, the two numbers get multiplied together. The value and then the tax rate tells you what your tax is. If this number goes up a lot, which is your value, the tax rate can come down so that the product, when you multiply them together, is still the same. We're going to collect what we need to run the town, so one goes up, one comes down, and you multiply them together. This year, we didn't have that one go up. So had it gone up, absolutely, we'd be lowering the tax rate probably by quite a bit. We'd still be ending up with the same amount of money. It would still be the same amount of money, but I would, we'd be able to say that we're not increasing the tax rate. Again, the general fund tax rate is flat. We're not increasing that. But overall, it's a two, almost 2.5% increase in the tax rate. Or, again, for a home valued at half a million dollars, about a dollar a month, about $12 a year. Not, not so bad, considering all of the expenses we have to deal with, with this pandemic. All right? All right. Again, thank you, Board. And again, I look forward to our discussion about the budget. We'll have public hearings. Do we have a date for those hearings on the budget? Sunday, do you know?
It's scheduled. I don't have that.
October 27th, I believe. October 27th, we believe. There'll be a public hearing on the budget, and we welcome public participa.
And what's this, October 27?
We welcome public participation. Take a look at it, this budget will be put online. Sunday, is it going up today on the website?
Coordinated with the CRC.
Well, we're going to put it up as quick as we can, we hope, today, so that the public can view it. It's put together in a user-friendly manner. I'm happy to continue to answer questions from the public, from the Town Board. The Control's Office also stands ready to answer anybody's questions about the budget. And again, thank you for, for hearing me out, and look forward to our eventual adoption of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to public portion. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard? All right, see none. I'll make a motion to close public portion.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bouvier. Roll in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Just if we want to do any updates, our numbers continue to be good in terms of locally COVID incident rates. You know, I watch this every day. We've had a number of days without any new cases in Southampton Town, which is good. We, we hope that that continues, you know, particularly as the kids, I know some of the, some of the schools have now started in person. I think Southampton Schools started this week. They had been doing remote, but now they're doing at least some in person. So there is a possibility that, obviously, that those numbers may increase. The census, what, Tommy John, when is the deadline? It's soon, right?
September 30th.
September 30th, so very soon. If you haven't completed that census, I know they're out enumerating.
Yep.
Because I've seen them. But please take 10 minutes to go online at www.my2020census.gov, fill out the census, and be counted. It's a well-spent 10 minutes, and it really could affect state aid, could affect federal